All right. Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Melissa, will you please call the roll?
Mary McCauley?
Here.
Lisa Deacon?
Here.
Scott Gingold?
I'm here.
Mary Beth Burns?
Here.
Mirna Arivalo?
Here.
Violetta Cullen? And Kirill Miranchev?
With five members present tonight, we do have a quorum. Also present tonight is zoning planner Melissa Klotz and planning and zoning administrator Scott Mangum. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time so that all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statements to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There is one item on the agenda tonight. It's 1919 Dumpster, and you guys are 1919 Dumpster?
Yes.
You're here. All right. All right. So before we get into meeting minutes, I'm going to ask anybody who plans on speaking tonight to raise your right hand, because I forgot this last week, two weeks ago. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Fantastic. All right. First, we are going to go with the meeting minutes. The first item on our agenda is the meeting minutes. And has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Any changes?
No.
Fantastic.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of September 25, 2018.
Second.
It's a movement seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, the motion passes. We are now moving on to old business, which is 1919 Dumpster. And since we just continued that last time, we didn't actually read that one into the record. So Melissa, will you read that into the record, please? I'm sorry, whose case is it? Is it Melissa's?
Yes.
Okay.
James E. Olgwin, attorney, applies for a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, McDonald's, and a special use permit for a drive-through facility at 1919 Dumpster Street in the C2 commercial district, zoning code section 61043. The applicant proposes a 91-square-foot building addition for a new drive-through window and a second ordering lane for a dual-drive-through facility. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. On October 10, 2018, the applicant submitted a revised site plan that removes the previously proposed vehicular pass-through lane in front of the building. Documents included as part of the record include special use application submitted August 28, 2018, plat of survey, project summary, revised site plan, elevations, signage plan, traffic circulation memorandum, drive-through comparison letter, previously approved special use ordinance 99095, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, DAPR draft meeting minutes excerpt of September 12, 2018, as well as two truck-turning diagrams that I will put up on the screen when we get to that point.
All right. If you wouldn't mind coming up and giving us your names and address, and business address is fine, and then telling us about your project.
Thank you, Chairman, board members. My name is Jim McGeehan. I'm from the Bukema Law Group. Address is 15 Salt Creek Lane in the Village of Hinsdale, and I am the zoning attorney for McDonald's. Also with me here this evening and to answer any questions regarding engineering is Ken Sack. He's from Watermark Engineering in Hill State. His address, if there are any questions regarding that. Tonight, we are here on McDonald's proposal for a major remodel of the existing McDonald's located at 1919 Dempster. The property, as you are aware, is currently zoned C2, and there are two special uses that affect the property. Number one is the fact that there is a drive-through. That's a special use. And next, that this is a type-two restaurant, which is the second special use, and that's why we're here this evening. The major remodel that we're looking at is really going to consist of three areas. Number one, we're going to be looking at doing site and landscaping improvements to the site. The second, we're going to be doing building improvements, both on the exterior and the interior of the building. And third, we're going to be altering the drive-through to make it more efficient by adding an additional drive-through lane and window. So let me go through those three items a little bit more specifically, and I can answer any particular questions you might have. In terms of actual site improvements, we are making quite a number of them. We're adding landscaping to the site at various points to just enhance, from a visual standpoint, the site. And also, some of that landscaping is functional. We are removing some of the parking stalls that are located immediately to the entrances on Dodge and also the easternmost on Dempster. And the purpose of that is to avoid conflict as people are coming in from those streets, from somebody who's parked there, and to back out. The additional benefit of that, in particular on the entrance on the eastern on Dempster, it allows us to put a sidewalk that better angles our pedestrians to the walkway that's going to bring them into the site. So those site improvements make the site overall safer. So we're removing some spots. We're providing better pedestrian access. We're going to be including a bicycle rack out front by Dempster as well. We're going to, obviously, as part of redoing this, we're going to add new striping, once again delineating places for pedestrians to cross to make it safer. We are also going to be relocating and installing a new dumpster facility, which is just if you go in through the, if you go straight on the easternmost entrance off of Dempster, you would be running into it. That dumpster is going to be made out of the same brick material as the building so that they're going to match. And as you can tell, there's going to be landscaping on either side of that as well. So that's going to be an additional improvement. We're going to be redoing the patio up front, which will provide an area for our customers during the summer to eat outside. In terms of the building, we are going to be upgrading the site from, this site is, I would say, probably over 30 years old in terms of architecture. And what we're going to be doing is bringing that building up to McDonald's current prototype standards. So it's going to have the modern, clean design that is going to be both in terms of, from an aesthetic, and also the functionality by adding that second drive-through window. From a functionality standpoint, it's going to make it more efficient and allow folks to go through the drive-through faster. The interior is also going to be remodeled, and that, there's a couple of reasons. One, once again, throughout its lifespan, McDonald's does upgrade its interiors. But in order to accommodate some of the items that McDonald's is going to be rolling out in terms of the way that it's going to be serving its customers who come in, there needs to be some interior changes that need to be done, and that's going to be part of this work as well.
Is this a company-owned store, or is this a franchise?
Yeah, this is a company-owned store. Then I spoke about the building change, which is the addition of that additional drive-through window, and that leads to the third item that we're improving, and that is the alteration of the drive-through and by adding an additional drive-through lane and an additional window. McDonald's is really the leader in drive-through technology and efficiency, I would say, across the world. And one of the things that has been noted and has been studied and it's been provided in the information for you is that the dual-drive-through allows for a 50% increase in the speed by which folks can get through the drive-through. And the reason for that, there's a couple of reasons. The first is that the ordering is really the slowest part of the drive-through process. It could either be just somebody who's trying to decide what they want, or it could be the complexity of the order, whether it's a special order or just an amount. And by allowing somebody to take two orders at the same time, it allows for somebody who's waiting or deciding, we can still go ahead and take the order on the other one. Similarly, if it is a long order, people have the ability to choose to go to the other lane in order to kind of speed their ordering process up. Also, from a design standpoint, one of the things that's important is to try to get that order from a site standpoint as early as possible. The distance between the order point and the delivery window, the longer you have between those two points, the better it is for the kitchen to be able to hear the order, put it in, and have it ready as soon as you drive up. So this particular design does that. It provides an additional speaker area where you can have another order being taken. And also, it moves the order point back a little bit, so it gives the kitchen a little bit more time to do that. So having those two items really increases the efficiency of the drive-through significantly. From a safety standpoint, what that means is you don't get the backup that you sometimes see, which is going to be a real benefit to this site. In addition, the way that we've reconfigured in the revised site plan that you have with you this evening is we've altered the drive-through location so that people that are coming in off of Dodge are going to have the ability to get into the drive-through queue on the outer drive-through lane. So that'll allow folks to, while in the past, they would either have to circulate around the site or have to go back, go through Dempster and then come back in. So all that is really going to make the site function better and increase the safety of the site.
Can you speak a little bit? So obviously, I get that this is efficient and probably better moneymaker for McDonald's. Can you talk a little bit about the flow of traffic through the drive-throughs, as well as how the onsite parking will affect that?
Sure.
So maybe just walk us through what the flow will be?
Sure. Basically, what we have is a one-way circulation around the building. If you're looking at the Dempster entrances, so you would have, the in entrance would be the entrance on the east, and the exit would be on the west. And to try to make sure that folks continue to follow that one-way circulation, one of the changes that we made was we angled the parking so that it's readily apparent what direction the flow needs to go. Similarly, there's going to be on-the-pavement markings in terms of directional flow arrows to indicate to patrons where they need to go in order for them to go through the drive-through or circulate around the site.
So there will be some sign on the east side of, on the Dempster entrance that says "Enter Only," and the other side will say "Exit Only" or something to that effect?
It will be pavement markings. If you look at where the arrow is by the entrance, there's an entrance arrow. But we have no problems putting a sign that says "Entrance Only." That's not a problem if that's something that you would recommend.
And has anybody looked at whether there might be a line-of-sight problem coming out the exit, looking for traffic coming from the east on Dempster? In other words, is the center in between there, is that going to create some sort of visual obstruction to be able to see east turning out with traffic onto Dempster?
Yeah. In terms of, from a visual standpoint, we're not doing anything to impact the visibility from what is currently there now. So we don't foresee that there would be any visibility issues looking east out of the exit.
So your landscape will stay lower than three feet?
Yes.
Okay. Just to put a pin in it for our own discussion, I think having "Enter Only" and "Exit Only" signs is probably a good idea for discussion.
I agree. I absolutely agree. Because I think there's enough people who go there who aren't familiar with Evanston and how these things go, and I think that will really clear it up for them, how to use this.
Yeah, we don't have any objection.
Can you please go into the flow through the facility off of Dodge now? Because to me, assuming the drawing is to some degree of scale, it looks to me like there may be a problem with two-way traffic in that side parking lot with parked cars and cars flowing in and out of the pattern.
Sure. So from a flow standpoint, if you, if you're going through the drive-through, let's talk about somebody who's just coming in off of Dempster, and then I'll get back to the Dodge area. If you're coming in off of Dempster through the primary entrance, you have two options. You can either go and park, which you have your handicap stalls, and then you also have a few parking stalls adjacent to the building. If you park, when it's time for you to leave, you're going to have two options. You pull out of your parking space, and you can either make a right, which would allow you to access Dodge, so that is intended to be two-way traffic, or you can continue up and go around the dual-drive-through. And that's intentionally done where we have what we call a bypass lane. So you can go around the building and exit back onto Dempster. That's a pretty typical layout for McDonald's in terms of that.
So are you saying there's actually room for three cars side by side to be making that turnaround the building?
Correct. Yeah. And that's something that we always want to maintain in our sites. We also, we always have to take care of if there's somebody who is sitting in the drive-through and they decide, actually, I don't want to wait, or I decided I want to go someplace else, or I'm running out of time, that they have an escape route where they can bypass the drive-through. And that's what it does. So we try to maintain that on all our sites.
So while we're talking about that flow from Dempster, at what point in the flow is it that a driver decides which lane they want to go into? In other words, are there going to be two cars side by side, all the way from Dempster all the way up towards the north? Or are they going to, does that turn from one into two at some point?
No. If you're going in the drive-through, there should just be a one-drive-through lane. So what we would expect the stacking to be would be as currently is depicted on the site plan, if you look at those cars. So that's where we would expect the cars to line up. The other lane is more of for a, oh, thanks. This is meant to, not for parking, but for cars to travel. So if you're parked here, you back out, and then you can either go over to Dodge or go around and back onto Dempster.
Right. So, sorry, using the pointer then, at what point does a single line of cars coming off of Dempster Street turn into two rows of cars going through the drive-through?
Well, we would expect that, it would depend, obviously, on the queue on the drive-through, but we would expect that that's about, because at this point, from a stacking standpoint, this current configuration stacks 14 cars, which is pretty significant. So we would expect that this is where, you know, drive-through stacking on a busy time would be. So in terms of, we would expect that, you know, no more than here, you would have two lanes of traffic where you could still have a car going through.
So if there are two lanes of traffic there at that point, doesn't that pose a problem for the diagonal parking spaces that are right there in terms of ingress and egress?
No, because this isn't intended to be a, this is like a drive-through area. It's not intended to be a parking or a dual stacking area. Your stacking is here, where you queue up to and make your decision point in terms of which drive-through lane you're going to go to, here. So you either go here, here. You don't start doing two stacking. And one of the things that we do in order to differentiate the general drive-through area from the drive-through lane is there's a difference in material here between the parking area where these cars are, and so it's more delineated. So folks aren't stacking and blocking the area. This is drive-through area. So anybody that's parked will just back on and back out.
I see. So where the arrows alongside the cars that are depicted there, you don't expect double rows of cars at that point?
No. This is just, no. There won't be, this is not stacking. This is not part of the drive-through.
Okay.
And there's striping, as Ken mentioned, there's a six-inch stripe that differentiates the drive-through lane from the driving area. So the intent is, and the way this functions, is that this is just purely for people to pull in, pull out, and drive through the site. So that's how that area works. In terms of if you're coming in off of Dodge, once again, you have two options. You can either park, which you would just park in this area, or if you want to go through the drive-through, you would go through and you would queue up at this particular location.
So let's assume a busy time of day?
Yes.
Where people are coming in off of both Dempster and Dodge?
Yes.
So you've got a line of cars in the queue coming off of Dempster and a line of cars in the queue going, backing up to Dodge. Okay?
Yes.
So can you explain how cars will be able to pull in and pull out of the Dodge-side parking lot at the same time that there's a line of cars going down the middle of that lot?
Sure. Number one, we wouldn't, this is two-way traffic, so it would just, you know, from, when we were talking about whether people would be blocked, if there was a long line of folks entering into the drive-through queue, they would just be on this side. And so somebody, if they were in that area, you're right, they might be blocked temporarily. But what we've seen in situations, and even in tighter situations like this, is there is kind of a courtesy where people let folks out. Once again, the good news is that that would only really be affecting one side, and the amount of stacking that this area provides is pretty significant. From this point to, when we start getting to that parking area, is fairly considerable and in addition to the other stacking that's onsite. And that's really, from a parking standpoint and an impact of folks driving through, that's really something that you'll see just about in any shopping center where you have a lot of folks coming in or through a drive-through lane while folks are looking for parking. It's something that will always be present in a commercial area with parking like this.
So the current setup at McDonald's has 62 parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay. So at a busy time of the day, how many of those spaces are occupied?
I don't know how many have been occupied. I don't know if we did a parking number.
No, but you did do a percentage of how much is drive-through, and I think it was something like 68% of your business is drive-through.
Yeah, it's around 70%. And so that's, and we generally see a little bit of a bump when we do the dual-drive, because you have folks who, if it's a busy drive-through, they like to park because it might take a little bit shorter time to go in. So when we institute the dual-drive through and things move very quickly, you tend to see a decrease in the number of folks parking.
Do you happen to know how much of your parking is currently utilized?
Sorry, it looks like the engineer hasn't answered my question.
Oh, okay.
Actually, they just did a...
Hey, sorry. You got to come to the microphone and give us your name and address?
My name's Ken Sack with Watermark Engineering, 2631 Ginger Woods Parkway, Aurora, Illinois.
Thank you.
They actually did a traffic study. They didn't do a parking study, per se, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
So is there, there's no data you have that says how many parking spaces are utilized at peak hours?
Not on this particular site.
Whenever you speak, I need you to speak at the microphone, please.
Yeah, I'll answer. Yeah. I don't, I didn't remember seeing any studies done regarding the parking numbers for this site. Primarily, we generally do parking count when the amount of parking is a concern. This site has, based on the size of the restaurant, the amount of parking wasn't a concern.
So if nobody looked at it, then on what basis do you conclude that 47 spaces are adequate?
Sure. Well, obviously McDonald's has tremendous number of restaurants throughout the area and throughout the country, and we have a pretty good understanding of, based on the size of the restaurant and what the parking counts are. From all the ones that I've done, the number that we'd like to be, that we're comfortable with is being in the 40s. So with what we're coming up with, which was 47, we're very comfortable that's well within the ballpark of parking sites that we have. And I think that's pretty consistent with most of the sites that we do.
How many employees work onsite that drive?
We have folks that come together. So in terms of how many of them actually are driving or taking public transportation for this particular location, I don't know. But we typically, like I said, with the parking counts in this area, those accommodate our workers and our patrons. Because obviously, from our perspective, if somebody doesn't stay around onsite because of having parking issues, that has an impact financially. So we're always very concerned to make sure that sites have sufficient parking.
I know that some McDonald's or some other fast-food restaurants have buses that come in and park, and a number of people get off the bus. Does that happen at this location? Is there parking onsite for buses?
There is no onsite designated parking. This site is actually, has more room for that type of use than other ones, in particular because of this area here as it goes onto Dodge. But we're generally not accustomed to having this much space, especially in a city area.
Do you feel that this revised site plan addresses the concerns that were raised at DAPR, which ultimately led to them rejecting the proposal? And can you speak to that, please?
Sure. DAPR's main concern, one of the main concern is we had a bypass lane, similar to up here, but it was going up front. So it would allow somebody to go around the building and back through. So if somebody parked here or went through the drive-through and wanted to get out to Dodge, that it would provide a mechanism for them to do that without getting onto Dempster. From our perspective, we felt that that was something that was beneficial and did provide some safety. But that was something that staff disagreed with. We went back and we wanted, and we took that out. Similarly, we also, to accommodate the folks coming in off of Dodge, we altered the location of this drive-through so it would allow them to access that outer drive-through lane. So that was, and obviously, I can let staff speak to that, but those were their concerns, and that's the revisions that were made to accommodate those concerns.
Isn't the net of making the modifications that you actually can get more cars to stack?
We can get more cars to stack because we did push back the drive-through further to the north. Yes.
Is the value of having that second parking lot, I'm, you know, sort of opposite Scott's concern, I actually wonder if this site is overparked, so we have excessive surface parking lot here. Is the value of that site really in just the vehicular access as opposed to parking?
Well, it's both. Because like I said, when we do a site, we generally want to be in the 40s. Because the other sides don't have as much, having that parking over in that area is really beneficial. Now, we did lose some parking just for added landscaping and safety at those entrance points. But we think we're right where we want to be in terms of to... you know, to, to the other board members' point. We want to make sure that we, you know, we don't, you know, lose customers, that we have enough parking for them. And, you know, we believe that this, that the way that this is designed, it does that.
Are you planning on adding signage on the, on the Dodge side as well? Because here's the interesting thing, for all the years I've lived here in Evanston, I had no idea that other lot was owned by McDonald's. I thought, I didn't know what it was for. It never occurred to me. I thought people are just cutting through there to get, you know, across the corner. So it would, there's some benefit to having it feel like it's part of the whole thing. And so that people are aware that that's part of the process.
With regards to the exit point on Dodge, there are, there are two directional signs there.
It's terrible.
There's an exit and enter directional sign that is currently out there.
I never noticed those. I just got, yeah, I just got shown a picture.
Yeah, they're only about probably two square feet, maybe three feet high.
Because if you're driving by, trying to figure out which one turns into Starbucks, it's like right before that.
There's also one directional sign on the exit on Dempster. There's actually a directional sign there as well.
But you're also talking about making those islands at the ends much bigger, so you can landscape those and make those more attractive.
Yeah, that's the intent.
Right?
Yep.
Right? Because now you need a place to stack, a car that needs to turn out onto Dodge.
It was more of a safety issue. We just, the other parking stalls were really close to both streets.
Yeah.
So we wanted to give a little, little bit more buffer there for somebody backing out, any kind of traffic.
Right.
Is there a sign on Dodge that the ADA parking is on Dempster only?
No, there's, there's no, there's no signage regarding that.
Thank you.
There was notes in the, it was noted in the, in the staff report, that everything else in the area is really only open till midnight. And this McDonald's, and I think one other place in town are open till, are open 24 hours. I think that there might be some interest in getting you to, getting the, the site to align with what else is happening in the neighborhood. Is that something you guys are amenable to doing?
Well, in, in terms of, from an operational, you know, time standpoint, you know, and this is something that, you know, we generally do at our, at most of our locations, is we, we definitely want the option to go 24 hours depending on what the need is. At this particular location, it's 24 hours, but it, that's not, that doesn't include the interior. The only thing that's really open for 24 hours is the, the drive-through. Where it becomes problematic on McDonald's standpoint, is that the decision-making, and in terms of improving the site and the investment that's going to be going into, you know, the remodel of the building, interior, all the site plan work, is really based on the, the current, you know, how much it's generating now, what we would expect it to generate based on these improvements. And that is really based, and that calculation was based on, you know, having that 24 hours. If we're pulling back the revenue stream, then it becomes, you know, a little bit more questionable in terms of whether the decision will, you know, would be to, to make all these improvements, scale it back, you know, just try to, you know, work with the single, you know, lane drive-through, you know, just do the facade or, or put it back. Because when McDonald's looks at, at sites, it's not just this site, they're looking at multiple sites and trying to figure out which ones, you know, they're going to move forward with. And they make those, you know, decisions based on the projections of where the funds are going to make the most return. So from, so from an economic decision standpoint, obviously that would be a very detrimental one, you know, one to them.
But what percentage of, what percentage of business are you doing between midnight and 6:00 AM?
That's something that they wouldn't necessarily share with you, but, you know, if that's something that, you know, that, you know, that we need to look at, you know, we can look at. But like I said, that's, in general, when they, they have not been necessarily willing to, you know, divulge, you know, you know, dollar figures in income and drive-through levels just from a competitive standpoint.
Nobody's asking dollar figures in income, we're asking percentage.
Okay.
Right? Because if you tell me it's 30% of your business, that's a different answer than it's 2% of your business.
Sure.
Well, one can suppose that, because this was a question that I had as well. But one can suppose that if they want to maintain those hours, that they are generating adequate income during those hours, in, in order to staff the, the drive-through. My question to city staff is whether you are aware that there have been any problems at this site related to its being open 24 hours. Because if it has not generated, you know, police calls or unwanted loitering, then perhaps it's delivering a service that, that people who work late hours are very happy with. So I, I don't know that if it is not creating a problem currently, that we would want to undo what is a successful business plan presently.
Who on staff's going to answer that? Don't all jump at once.
I'm not aware of any issues. I'm, I'm sure randomly there has to be something, but I'm not aware that there are continuous or ongoing issues overnight, with overnight hours. And just also to note, this is one of the very few areas of the city where there is not residential in close proximity, so that could play into the hours.
Well, and there are some industrial uses that may have very, very late hours, and people with shifts that, that terminate after the midnight hour. So I, are you aware, either of you, of there being any incident reports at this location in the hours between midnight and 5:00 AM?
I'm not aware of anything in, in the evening. I think the only items that, you know, that have ever been is, you know, sometimes like after school, that there's more, you know, loitering than, you know, but not, not at that time.
It, it might be something that we can, that we can pose to the police department and ask them if they're...
Well, let's ask staff to try and, and determine what those pieces of information are before this goes to city council.
Right.
So that they have the full story. And if it's not a problem, then it's not a problem. Awesome. If it's a problem, let's address it.
Sure.
So, yeah. We just need the information. Any other questions from anybody?
I have one additional question. Are there, is there, based on the improvements that you, the changes in the improvements that you've described and are shown here tonight, is there anything here that would either help or hinder the queuing situation that happens, happens at the adjacent Starbucks? Because that obviously is an issue. So anything that we do here at this adjacent site would hopefully not add to anything, add to the impact that happens at that corner, at that adjacent site. It might even help.
Yeah, everything that we're doing is really going to increase the efficiency of, of the site, make it flow better. And so what that means is that, you know, if you have the issues where, you know, the, the stacking would, would start bumping into Dempster, we, we get rid of that. Because, you know, we're increasing the, our, what we call the throughput of folks to the drive-through by, by 50%, which is a, you know, a significant increase. We're increasing the amount of stacking that's located onsite. So not only do we move people through forward, but we can hold more people. So combination of all that, you know, it should, you know, definitely, you know, make things better and not have any kind of negative impact on any of the adjacent properties.
I have one graphical question only. I couldn't read these small signs that are two parking spots at the end of the Dodge parking, to the left.
Over here?
To the left, yes. This one and the bottom one. And there is one more at the left bottom.
Those are just, I think those are just like the parking counts, is that right, Ken? That just identifies how many parking stalls are in that area. That will not actually be painted on, on the site. It just gives, yeah, just gives the count.
Thank you.
All right. So that's all the questions we have. There is nobody else here, so there's no public comment on this. Is there anything you'd like to say in summation?
In summation, just, you know, what, what we're looking to do is really, you know, improve things in, in all the ways, both the, the site plan, the building, interior and exterior, and, and the drive-through. Make it a safer location, a more efficient location, and just a better-looking and more pleasing location for, for the community and, and our customers. So thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will close the record. Comments from the board?
I think that anything that improves a business and increases its efficiency and helps it to remain successful, particularly if it's also beautification improvement, should be appreciated. I would like to take this opportunity, before it goes to city council though, to go to the Evanston Police and just ask them for an incident count at this location between the hours of midnight and 5:00 AM. If it's insignificant, then I, I would be supportive of this as it stands.
I agree with those comments. I also think that we, if we are recommending that this be approved by city council, that we both recommend that those Dempster side entrance and exits be required to have signs clearly marking them as such, for enter only and exit only. But also that city council get whatever input it needs to decide whether or not left turns out of that exit on Dempster are appropriate, or should be marked as inappropriate. I'm not sure. I, I think there's already a problem with cars turning left out of Starbucks and trying to turn back to go east down Dempster.
Yeah.
And having a second set of cars doing that, that are doubled up as a result of having two lanes coming out the other side, could potentially be problematic. But I, but I think that's something city council can decide.
I have two, two suggestions.
Yep.
The, the, this plan obviously improves things, and I, I think we should support it. I have some small things that may be beneficial. One of the things in your report, no matter that it is for the previous plan, is that there are people that make, let's call it U-turn, using your site, then going to Dempster, then going back on Dodge. And if we can make something to prevent this, or at least minimize it, it will be beneficial. So I would say that you should put another sign on Dodge that your ADA parking is from Dempster only. Because currently, an ADA vehicle, if it enters, let's say, unknown angle from Dodge, there is no other way, but it has to go on Dempster and try to enter back again, which may be very, very rare, but still it's a probability. And then if somebody, the other problem was if people are somehow unhappy with their drive-through order, they will have to go back again, and again, going to Dempster, and again, entering the site, if they miss something or they're not happy. So what I would suggest is that the two parking spots that are at the Dempster exit of the site, be dedicated to either quick parking, like five minutes, 10 minutes, or be marked in such a way that allows people to stop, change order, and then drive out, and not drive through again, which will be a problem. So these are two things that I think will make some sense to the profit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, being that I used to design McDonald's, I actually think the plan is fine. The only suggestion that I would have is to designate the drive-through signage to make sure that you're not entering off of Dodge to the drive-through, because people are going to cut through there, which is what they do at Starbucks as well, and then try to cut into the drive-through lane.
Except I think that's their intention.
Is their intention.
That's their intention. Their intention is for it to not, stack not only towards Dempster, but to stack towards Dodge. So you would essentially have two stack lanes at the busiest time. I think that's absolutely their intention. Because you see the, on the, on the, on the north side of the plan...
Not when the arrow, not when the arrow is pointing out from here.
Yeah, no, just above that, just above that. You'll see that there's an arrow in the plan. It's hard to see there, but it's part of their drive-through. And so that big thick line is sort of the stop before you get into the drive-through on the, on the top. So I think their intention is actually, in the busiest of times, to stack both ways. And I saw nods, although the record is closed, I saw nods from the applicant.
You know, they explained that. I asked them to walk us through that.
Okay. I have nothing to say then.
I agree, it's a problem from the Starbucks, but at least this is a longer runway than the Starbucks presents, so maybe it won't be as big a problem. Plus, there are two drive-through lanes unlike just one at Starbucks, so.
Right.
It seems like the, the cars coming from Dodge, he was explaining, would filter just into the outside drive-through lane.
Yes.
At the, at the top of that, where it splits.
I think it requires some civility among patrons.
Right.
Yeah, you're also going to get, you're also going to get the people go and bypass and park on the other side as well.
Say that sentence again. I'm not following that sentence.
They're also going to bypass, because you have the bypass lane just on the other side of the...
Yes.
So people are going to bypass, go around, and park on the other side.
Yes.
That's, yeah. Although if, it'd be kind of silly to run the risk of doing that and not just park on the Dodge side parking lot. Because you don't know before you turn through there whether there's going to be spaces.
Mira, what's the problem with that? I hear, I understand what you're saying, but why is that an issue?
No, there, there is no issue. I'm just saying, that's, that's typical, normal behavior of people.
Yes.
Driving.
Yes. To try and get as close as possible to the entrance.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. Overall, I would say, I feel like the applicant has addressed some of the points that were a concern in DAPR with the, you know, the cut-through lane in front that brought cars in opposition with pedestrians, additional bike parking. I like that there's additional landscaping being provided, and that hopefully these improvements will have a positive impact on, you know, sort of the disruption in queuing and other things on Dempster as well as Dodge. So I overall think this is a, you know, something that I would support.
I would have to agree with all the comments of my colleagues. Additionally, getting a better-looking building there is key. That's a ridiculous building, and it should have been remodeled about 10 years ago. So I think that's a key component, and kudos to staff for holding out on that. So I think that's a good thing, because I know you guys have made this application before without being willing to make that change. And I think that's a big component for Evanston, for getting modernized. So the other, say it again?
One additional clarification, maybe to address a board member's, Mira's suggestion about the parking towards Dempster on the western side of the site.
Yeah.
I don't think it came up in the testimony, but those are three spaces closest to the exit there are labeled as proposed pull-forward striping and signage.
Right.
So I think primarily that would be for someone who places a large order that's not ready, and they pull forward, and then that could be brought out. But additionally, I think it might address the concerns that those would be more likely to be open spaces if someone did have a problem with the order and needed to go back in.
I do have to say, I think Carol's made an excellent point, is to put a handicap, or move one of those handicap spaces to the other side, so that regardless of how you enter this, the, the site, whether you enter from Dodge, or whether you enter from Dempster, you have access to a handicap spot that is close to the entrance. And I think that doesn't cost you anything. I think that's easy enough to solve. The other things is, I just, anecdotally, I've spent a long time sitting in traffic that gets backed up all the way to Ashland because of the amount of traffic that refuses to use the double lanes west of Dodge because of the fear of backup coming out of that Starbucks and coming out of McDonald's. And it is a massive traffic, traffic nightmare over there because of that, because everybody refuses to. So I am highly in favor of getting cars off the street. I'd love to solve it at, at Starbucks as well, because people just don't seem to be smart over there. So what I'm hearing from the board, though, is that there are a couple of conditions that we would like to impose on this. One is that there is entrance and exit-only signage on the Dempster entry and exits, that we, that staff look at the data on left turns out of Dempster, and if that is appropriate to limit that. I, I like the idea, again, of adding an ADA parking spot to the west side of the Dempster Street. adding an ADA parking spot to the west side of the Dempster Street parking, so that there is ADA access from both entrances without having to do that crazy U-turn thing. I think we would also like to see staff get some data on the percentage of profits that come from being open from 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
I'd like to, I'd like to suggest, instead of asking that question, I think the point that Muffy raised earlier, instead is going and getting the data to see if there have been incidents related to this business operating between the hours of midnight and 5:00. I don't think that it is, should be our position to limit the business operations if there haven't been concerns raised by the neighbors, and in fact, there have not been issues related with this business operating during those times.
I don't disagree with you. However, I think getting both pieces of data is not a bad idea. And the more data you can have to make those decisions, the more informed you can be.
I know. I'm not sure that, yeah, I'm not sure that their business, their business profitability at various hours is really of concern to us. You know, as a city, we are concerned that they're operating, that they're operating an upright business that's not creating a problem in the community. But I don't really think that we should be saying, "We want to know how much you make during this hour and how much you make during that hour."
Nobody's asking for, I'm not asking certainly for absolute numbers. I'm talking about a percentage. Yeah, I'm just talking about a percentage. And I think, for me, it is important, because nothing else in the neighborhood is open midnight. And I think that's strange. And I think that's...
Well, McDonald's is a very specific kind of business. And a few of the McDonald's are known for being open all night. And I think that, once again, if there are no nuisance incidents or of any significance at this site during those hours, why would we want to curtail what is a successful business operation? I mean, let the business operate the business and let us make sure that it's operated in a way that is safe and healthy for the community.
And we can agree to disagree, and this will be my last comment on it, is just that every other business in the area is open till, is open till, there's nothing open later than midnight. And as a board, we have tried to standardize those hours in commercial districts, so that we have some uniformity and some expectation by the neighborhood and residents, and an expectation of what these, these commercial areas in our town have. So I think that, again, it's not a bad idea to get that additional information. Whether anybody chooses to use it in making their determination is completely up to them.
I have a question for staff. Does staff have a sense of what the hours are for other similar drive-through uses? I'm thinking of the Burger King on, what is that, Sherman and, you know, just...
You mean just across the street, or you mean the one downtown on, near the Orienton?
Well, I was thinking of the one downtown, but where's the one?
Right. That's 24 hours as well.
So...
City's been trying to get rid of that for years.
I hear your point. I'm just, this is a little bit of a different type of business. And so I'd want to be comparing it to, you know, looking at what the operating hours are for other similar types of businesses, even if there's not, those are different from what's happening at their immediate...
I would go so similarly as to be what the Burger King is across the street. If that's 24, is that 24 hours?
Where's the Burger King?
Right at the corner of Dodge and Dempster and Dodge.
Google has the closing hours for that Burger King at...
You never go there, do you?
I'm obviously not a customer, so I can't picture it.
The hours are listed for that, close at 1:00 AM Thursday nights and 2:00 AM Friday and Saturday nights.
Guys, I would just, let's require the data, and let's let city council
Yes.
make an informed decision, one way or the other.
That's exactly my point. And then the last thing was what Muffy had alluded to is that we would also like information, staff to gather information regarding any concerns, issues with late hours from a loitering, police calls standpoint, if there is any concern with any of those, with that department on having this be a 24-hour component. They might be. They might be. They might be. But we don't know until we have the data. Okay. So were there any other conditions anybody's thinking about? Did I miss anything? All right. So I'm going to go through these nine standards for a special use, and then somebody can make a motion with those conditions. Okay. Number one, it is, this special use is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. Type 2 restaurant is certainly eligible to be in this C2 district, so that standard has been met. Number two, it is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. Thank you. The proposed site modifications certainly improve the functionality and vehicular access while maintaining pedestrian safety, which certainly are goals of the zoning ordinance. So that standard has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood, and then the effect of the proposed type of a special use upon the city as a whole. This is an existing operation and a business that has been in this area for a long time. I do believe that these changes will actually improve the effect of what's happening in that neighborhood. So I don't think that there's anything negative about it at all. So I think that that standard has been met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. It's surrounded by similar commercial and light industrial, so it will have no effect. In fact, the exterior improvements will greatly enhance the value of that neighborhood. So I think that that standard has been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. There are no changes to that, so that standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. In fact, that's what we're trying to solve here, is any traffic congestion of backups onto Dempster and of people cutting corners through, from Dodge to Dempster as well. So that standard has certainly been met.
I'd just add on standard number six, that I think some of the conditions that we've discussed would alleviate potentially any additional undue traffic congestion.
Okay. I agree. Thank you. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. That is not applicable. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features. That is not applicable as well. And number nine, it complies with all the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent such regulations have been modified through a plan development process or the grant of a variation. And it certainly will have business licenses and all that other sort of good regulations that will follow all those regulations. So I believe that that standard has been met.
With that, I'll make a motion in the matter 18 ZMJV-0080 regarding 1919 Dempster Street, that we recommend to city council to approve the special uses requested, subject to the following conditions. One, that the Dempster Street entrance and exits be required to be marked with "Enter Only" and "Exit Only" signage that's clear from the street. Two, that the plan be revised to the degree necessary to make ADA-compliant parking accessible from either the Dodge or the Dempster entrances. Three, that the plan be modified to the extent it needs to be, such that there are spaces near the Dempster Street exit that allow for short-term parking for either staging for customers that are waiting for their food, or for customers that need to return their food or exchange it. What am I forgetting, Mary Beth?
That we, that staff look at the data on left turns.
Yes, so that staff collect data from McDonald's and from the city, and provide it to city council, related from McDonald's to the percentage of revenue generated from the hours of 12 to 6 on this site, and from the city with respect to during the same hours, the, whether the number of safety reports are unusual at this location for those times. And that city council, we recommend that city council use those two sources of data to determine whether or not a reduction in the hours of operation are advisable. And also that city council consider whether a no-left turn out of the Dempster Street exit is advisable as well, given the potential for traffic backup. And, sorry, what did I forget?
Well, no, a point of clarification regarding the business hours, the overnight business hours, would we, instead of the 12 to 6, would we then follow what we heard from staff as it relates to the Burger King operating hours?
I think so.
I think we should leave it, just leave it to city council to make that determination, what hours are appropriate, if there's a reduction that's necessary. And the final condition being that the property otherwise be developed and operated in accordance with the documents and testimony submitted.
It's been moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, your project goes to city council with a recommendation for approval with the conditions. So, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Is there anything we want to talk about tonight? Because we have no new business. Are we talking about anything? Discussion?
Moved to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.